Peace be upon you, this is Said Mirza from withinourreason.com and today we're going to be continuing on with our Quran study series. This is session number three, we're gonna be starting at chapter number three of the Quran. This is Brother Gans translation of Quran and complete revelation and I'm going to be reading it from reader dot corona dot com. So let's begin, in the name of God, the Almighty and merciful, I seek refuge in God from the accursed Satan. Alif Lam Mim. Now, as I mentioned, Alif Lam Mim is has to do with the Al Kitab. Uh, these are the symbols that uh, this is the Al Kitab, Alif Lam Mim. Uh, obviously, these are the symbols, we don't know their interpretation and that's where the Quran is said to be an exposition of the Al Kitab. Uh, an explanation of the Al Kitab, so the Quran is expanding these symbols and explaining them to us. That's my understanding of what these uh, Alif Lam Mim uh, symbols are all about. God, there is no God save he, the living, the eternal. He sent down upon thee the writ, the Al Kitab, with the truth confirming what was before it and he sent down the Torah and the gospel. Before as guidance for mankind and he sent down the division, those who deny the proofs of God, they have a severe punishment. And God is exalted in might and vengeful. Now, God sent down upon Muhammad, the the Al Kitab, the writ, with the truth confirming what was before it. And the literal translation of that is between its hands and Brother Gans has a very excellent footnote here, he says, I understand this to mean here what was within its scope, that is that which it treated itself, treated of or concerned itself with. And then he have another note at two sixty-six, so basically that the Quran is is confirming itself. Um, that's my understanding of it too and uh, we're gonna see, God willing, as we proceed, how that works. Um, and he sent down the Torah and the gospel, so this has to do with the the earlier guidances, the Torah and the Injil. Whether the Torah and Injil are what we have surviving now as far as the Old Testament and the New Testament. Um, I don't know, uh, and honestly, to me, the Quran is what I follow and the Quran is sufficient guidance, so uh, I don't really delve into these questions. But before as guidance to mankind, he sent down the Torah, the Torah and Injil, that's what the Quran says. And he sent down the division, now the division is not something separate, the division is actually the Quran itself, Al Furqan, the Quran calls itself the Al Furqan. The Quran also calls itself the Zikr, so these are the two names of the Quran, so when you see those things, then it's referring to the Quran. Those who deny the proofs of God, they have a severe punishment and God is exalted in might and vengeful. From God hides not anything in the earth or in the heaven, in the heaven. He is who forms you in the wombs as he wills, there is no God save he, the exalted in might, the wise. He is that sent down upon thee the writ, the Al Kitab, among it are explicit proofs. They are the foundation of the writ and others are ambiguous. Then as for those in whose hearts is deviation, they follow what is ambiguous thereof, seeking the means of denial and seeking its interpretation. And no one knows its interpretation save God and those firm in knowledge, they say, we believe in it, all is from our Lord, but only those of insight take heed. Now, the the Al Kitab is, as I've mentioned, it is the set of written commands that God sent to mankind, okay? And among it are explicit proofs and here in Arabic, it says, Minhu Ayatun Mohkumatun, Mohkumatun, this means that they're firm. Um, they're not open for interpretation, they're they're uh, they're sound. Uh, these are the foundation of the writ and others are ambiguous, Mutashabiyaten, con-similar or they look alike, this is what the word means. So basically what's saying is that in whose hearts is uh, deviation, uh, they uh, look at the ambiguous verses, the con-similar verses and try to derive the interpretation and the reason they're trying to derive the interpretation is simply because uh, they are trying to justify um, they're trying to justify what they are doing, I mean, in the case of the Muslims, um, you have that phrase obey God and obey the messenger, which is so often uh, mistranslated and uh, hmm, twisted by the scholars of the Islam, by the doctors of law to basically authorize the uh, inclusion of the Hadith literature. And that's a prime example of what this means here, because by doing this, they are basically going towards denial by using uh, by by um, following the ambiguous verses and trying to derive the interpretation to basically um, authorize what they're doing. Now, we ask for those who are firm in knowledge, they are firm in knowledge because they have studied the Quran carefully, uh, they look at verses within context. They are um, where they're in doubt, they look at the, a phrase across the Quran, they compile verses that treat a certain subject together to and gain understanding, so those are the firm in knowledge because they've studied, uh, they say, we believe in it, we we believe in it, we believe in all of the writ. Um, this is the other thing that Muslims, you know, if uh, they say they believe in in the Quran, but uh, if you if you actually really get into the nuts and bolts of the Sunni religion or the Shia religion, you'll see that a lot of times they uh, take the Hadith literature and use that to advocate or modify commandments of God in his writ and so they don't believe in it in totality. Our Lord, make thou not our hearts to deviate after thou hast guided us and bestowed thou upon us mercy from thyself, thou art the bestorer. So this is a prayer to God that make not our hearts to deviate, that we end up like these guys who are um, seeking the means of denial by uh, seeking the interpretation of ambiguous verses or try to justify what they're doing by using verses that are not clear. Our Lord, thou art gathering mankind to a day about which there is no doubt, God God will not break the appointment. Verse ten, those who ignore warning, they wilt and their children will avail them nothing against God and it is they who are the fuel of the fire. Like the case of the house of Pharaoh and those before them, they denied our proofs, so God sees them for their transgressions and God is severe in retribution. Now, as you may recall, these, those who ignore warning in the Lazina Kafadu, uh, it says in the for, in the second chapter, it says, it is the same to them whether thou warnest them or thou has not warned them, they do not believe. So that's why it's saying here that, I mean, their case is closed, really, that's what the understanding we get, the, nothing will help them, they are fuel for the fire. To continue. Say thou to those who ignore warning, you will be defeated and ga- gathered into Gehenna and evil is the resting place. Okay, now we move on to a proof that God is uh, showing, there had been a proof for you in the two hosts which met, one host fighting in the cause of God and another denying. They saw them as twice their like by the sight of the eye, but God strengthens with his will whom he wills and that is a lesson for those of vision. Now, I have a little bit of different understanding of this, so what what God is saying here is that uh, if you remember, well, actually, we're gonna see that later on. This had, this is what happened, that basically that uh, the force of the believers was very uh, small compared to the force of the disbelievers. And uh, but when they saw each other, God lessen their numbers, they like, God lessen the number of the believers to the unbelievers, so that the unbelievers would basically engage them in in the battle and similarly, the unbelievers were their numbers were lessened for the believers, so the believers wouldn't uh, be afraid, wouldn't be afraid, they wouldn't run from battle, they would engage too, so that the battle would continue. So here in Arabic, it says, uh, Yarounahum Mislihim Raialain, so they saw, they saw them as their like with their eyes, that's really what I mean. So basically that they saw each other as being the same number, when in reality, the disbelievers' force was far more superior numerically than the uh, the believer's force. So that was a sign for um, for the believers, that God had lessened the number of the unbelievers in the sight of the believers. Um, see it says, there had been a proof for you in the two hosts which which met, one host fighting in the cause of God and another denying, so that was a proof. To continue, verse fourteen, made fair for men is the love of lusts for women and sons and amassed fortunes of gold and silver and branded horses and cattle and tilt, that is the provision of the life of this world, but God with him is the best journey's end. Now, this is interesting, yeah, it says made fair for men is the love of lust, so men actually, they'll they'll, they enjoy the lust thing, they don't really enjoy the prize. If you, I don't know, if you've noticed this, I've noticed this about myself, that I always, I'm wanting something, but when I get it, then it's, I get bored and then I move on to the other, the next thing. So basically, that's what it's saying here, that men, they they, this this uh, this love of lust is what drives them to acquire and to hoard, but it actually, once they get it, you know, it's, let's move on to the next thing. Say thou, shall I inform you better than that, for those who are in prudent fear, with their lord are gardens beneath which rivers flow. They abiding eternally therein and purified spouses and approval from God and God sees the servants. Those who say, our Lord, we believe, so forgive thou us, our transgressions and protect thou us from the punishment of the fire. The patient, the truthful, the humbly obedient and those who spend and the seekers of forgiveness at dawn. God bears witness that there is no God save he, as do the angels and those of knowledge upholding equity. There is no God save he, the exalted in might, the wise. The doctrine with God is submission and those given the writ differed only after knowledge had come to them through sectarian zealotry between them. And whoso denies the proofs of God, then is God swift in reckoning. So God's telling us what happened with the people of old when they were given the writ and this is the same, this is the same thing that's happened in the Muslims. Because uh, after the Muslims were given the writ and they also differed and basically started persecuting each other, hating each other, creating these sectarian divisions because they were jealous of each other. So, and it says here, and whoso denies the proofs of God, and so this denial of the proof of God, like I said, the word denial, yes, it means in a, in a sense, yeah, it definitely means deny to, you know, reject, but also it has a connotation of in the, in the Quran, it has a connotation of someone who is uh, not applying, not applying the the writ of God or who accepts it verbally but doesn't really implement it. So that's what it said, and whoso denies the proofs of God, then is God in swift in reckoning and how is God swift in reckoning, he misguides them. That's what he's saying here. He misguides them, they become of the false claimers of guidance, the Al Kafirun. So something to be very wary of. And if they argue with thee, then say thou, I have submitted my face to God as have those who follow me. And this is important because Muhammad is being told to say, and if they argue with thee, then say thou, I have submitted my face to God as those who follow me. So if you claim to follow Muhammad, you also need to submit your face to God, not follow religion, see, this is, this just means to submit to God. And say thou to those given the writ and to the unschooled, have you submitted? And if they have submitted, then are they guided, but if they turn away, then upon thee is only the notification and God sees the servants. This is also important, see, the messenger's role was the notification, says here, then upon thee is only the notification. So Muslims have a lot of stories about what Muhammad's role was, but here we have a clear indication of what the messenger's role, Muhammad had different roles, he was a messenger, he was a prophet, so this is the messenger's role. Um, and I'm, we're gonna look into what the prophets' roles are as we go forward with the Quranic study. And God sees the servants, verse twenty-one, those who deny the proofs of God and kill the prophets without cause and kill those who enjoin equity among men. Give thou them tidings of a painful punishment. Those are they whose works are vain in the world and the hereafter and they have no helpers. Has thou not considered those given a portion of the writ, they are invited to the writ of God, that it might judge between them, then a faction of them turns away and they are averse. So these people have a portion of the writ, they don't have the complete writ, by the way, the Quran contains a complete writ, that's why it's so important to hold fast to the Quran because the Quran is, it contains the Al Kitab, the writ, but anyway, for those people who were given a portion of the writ, uh, for whatever reason, uh, because they forbear, you know, split the the religion into sects and, you know, they had their own books. Now, they are invited to writ of God, this is the complete writ of God, that it might judge between them, um, but they turn away, a faction of them turns away and they are averse. For it is that they say, the fire will not touch us save days numbered and what they invented has deluded them in their doctrine. So they invented this, that the fire will not touch us save days numbered. And by the way, the Muslims believe this too, I was growing up, uh, when I was growing up, I heard this a lot, that the Muslims, even if they do enter hell, it'll be for a short time, they'll be safe. So I'm just trying to show you the parallels here. Then how will it be when we gather them to a day about which there is no doubt and every soul is paid in full for it earned and they will not be wrong? So basically, God is saying that if this is true, then how will it be? If this is true, that the fire will only touch them for days numbered, then how will it be? How, how is it possible that God will gather them to a day and they will be paid in full? So obviously, what they invented has deluded them, this will, this is not what's gonna happen. Say thou, oh God, master of dominion, thou givest dominion to whom thou wilt and thou removest dominion from whom thou wilt. Thou exaltest whom thou wilt and thou obeisest whom thou wilt, in thy hand is good, thou art over all things powerful. Thou makest the night enter into the day and thou makest the day enter into the night and thou bringest forth the living from the dead and thou bringest forth the dead from the living and thou givest provision to whom thou wilt without reckoning. Now, one of the things you'll notice in the Quran is that there's the uh, the pairs, that that is woven in the text, I mean, um, God said he created everything in pairs and he is showing you these pairs, see? Uh, he he gives dominion, he removes dominions, he exalts, he obeises, in his hands is good. Uh, he makes the night enter into the day, see, again pair, day into night, day entering to night, he brings forth the living from the dead, the the dead from the living and he gives provision to whom he wills without reckoning. And this is actually a good prayer, these are prayers that I've compiled in my book, Within Our Reason, in the last chapter, these are all, this is all compiled, these prayers. So uh, if you want to do the Salat, uh, as far as, you know, the Quranic Salat, which is also glorifying God and remembering him and asking him, then uh, you can use those as a guideline. Verse twenty-eight, let not the believers take as allies the false claimers of guidance rather than believers. And whoso does that is not of God in anything, save that you be in prudent fear of them as a precaution. And God warns you of himself and to God is the journey's end. So you shouldn't be taking them as allies, the Al Kafirun and the Al Kafirun, like I said, these are the, the people who are the um, it's a specific set of people, uh, I think I talked about that in session number one. So you shouldn't be taking them as allies besides the believers and uh, you should be in prudent fear of them as a precaution, as in you need to be wary of them because they're not your friends, basically. Say thou, whether you hide what is in your breasts or reveal it, God knows it and he knows what is in the heavens and what is in the earth and God is over all things powerful. The day every soul will find what it did of good someone and what it did of evil, it will wish there was between it and that a great distance. And God warns you of himself and God is kind to the servants. Okay, so literally, uh, Brother Gans is saying between it and it, that is between the soul and what it did of evil. So they want a great distance between the evil and what themselves. Say thou, if you love God, follow me, God will love you and forgive you your transgressions and God is forgiving and merciful. So we already looked at what that following means, in the traditionalist loves to use this one, he says, look, follow Muhammad and then he's got his stories from Bukhari. Next one is, this is the first occurrence of the phrase obey God and the messenger, because I told you in the beginning, it talks about and the ambiguous verses and this is the first occurrence, so there you go. Say thou, obey God and the messenger, then if they turn away, God loves not the false claimers of guidance. Verse thirty-three, God chose Adam and Noah and the house of Abraham and the house of Imran above all mankind. By the way, I made a video about this as well, obey God and the messenger, it's on the channel, so I do encourage you to look at the, that video because it talks about all the instances of obey God and the messenger. And not sure what I'm saying here is that basically, when it says obey God and the messenger, it's talking about the messenger's speech, which is preserved in the Quran. See, in many places, God will say, say thou, and then Muhammad is told to say something, so that's the messenger's speech, so when God is saying obey God and the messenger, that's what he means by it. Um, anyway, if you wanna look at that. Thirty-three, God chose Adam and Noah and the house of Abraham and the house of Imran above all mankind. Descendants one of another and God was hearing and knowing, as in there, some of their descendants were chosen and others were not chosen. And God was hearing and knowing, when the wife of Imran said, my Lord, I have vowed to thee what is in my womb in consecration, so accept thou from me, thou art the hearing, the knowing. Then when she had given birth to her, she said, my Lord, I have given birth to a female. And God knew best to what she was to give worth. And the male is not like the female and I have named her Mary, Maryam, and I seek refuge in thee for her and her descendants from the accursed Satan. So her lord accepted her with a comely acceptance and caused her to grow with a comely growth and placed her in the charge of Zakaria. Zakaria, whenever Zakaria entered upon her in the chamber, he found with her provision, he said, oh Maryam, whence comes this to thee? She said, it is from God, God gives provision to whom he wills without reckoning. Thereupon, Zakaria called to his lord, saying, my lord, thou, give thou me from thyself goodly progeny, thou art the hearer of supplication. And the angels called to him as he stood performing the duty in the chamber, God give thee, God gives thee glad tidings of John Yahya, confirming a word from God, both honorable and chaste and a prophet among the righteous. Now, for, wanted to look at this part, okay, it says that, if you notice, that Zakaria was in the chamber, Mehhab. Uh, this is where Mary was worshiping God, serving God and uh, he found, he saw that there was provision there and he asked her, where does this come from? And she said, from God, so now he's, he's in the chamber, right? Okay, let's continue, thereupon Zakaria called to his lord, Honalika here in Arabic, that means right there and then. Okay, you can verify, look at, look this word up in the Quran, where else it's used, there and then, right there and then, okay, well, he's in the chamber, he was talking to Maryam. And then he called to his lord and he said, my lord, give thou me from thyself goodly progeny, thou art the hearer of supplication. And the angels called to him as he stood performing the Yusalli, the Salat, he was doing the Salat, performing the Salat in the chamber. So there you go, this is, this is what what Salat was, he was, he was standing and he was calling to God. See, Samyuddua, hear of supplication, he was supplicating to God, he was standing there, right there and then. And while he was doing that, then the angels gave him the good news of Yahya. So this is it, this, this is not, this is not a ritual prayer, see, that's what I'm trying to get to. Said he, my lord, how will I have a lad when old age has reached me and my wife is barren? He said, does his God, he does what he wills. Said he, my lord, make thou for me a proof. He said, thy proof is that thou shall not speak to men three days save by gestures. And remember thou thy lord much and give thou glory in the evening and the morning. I wanna come back to this thing, okay, it says, and the angels called to him as he stood performing the duty in the chamber, God gives thee glad tidings of John Yahya, confirming a word from God. Now, the understanding is that he is confirming uh, Jesus, but actually, the, it's the same Arabic for Jesus and John, which leads me to believe that uh, you know, they talk about the miraculous birth of Jesus, it's a miraculous birth of Yahya as well. He, he confirmed a word from God, because, well, what is that word? But God says that when he intends a thing to, to, when he intends a thing, he says to it, be and it is, so that's the confirmation, that God said be and Yahya was uh, created, so he, it's the same Arabic, well, I'll show you, okay, cuz it's gonna talk about Isa, uh, right after this. So in Arabic, it says, Allahu, Inna Allaha Yubashiroka Bi Yahya Musaddiquan Bi Kalimatim Min Allahi. See, Musaddiquan Bi Kalimatim Min Allahi is confirming uh, the word from God. A word from God, so let's just look at that, Musaddiquan, you're gonna see the same phrasing, anyway, to continue. And when the angel said, verse forty-two, oh Mary, God has chased, chosen thee and purified thee and chosen thee above the woman of all mankind. Oh Mary, be thou humbly obedient to thy lord and submit thou and be thou lowly with the lowly. That is from the reports of the unseen which revealed to thee and thou was not with them when they cast their lots, for who should have charge of Mary? And thou, Maryam, and thou was not with them when they disputed. When the angel said, oh Maryam, God gives thee glad tidings of a word from him. See, Yubashiroka Bi Kalimatim Minhu, okay, same thing. Yubashiroka Bi Kalimatim Minhu, okay, and here we had, yeah, Musaddiquan Bi Kalamatum Min Allahi, see, same word. Okay. His name is the Messiah, Isa. Son of Maryam, esteemed in the world and the hereafter and among those brought near. He will speak to men in the cradle and in maturity and he is among the righteous. Now, see, we're getting a foreshadowing that he is not going to make it till ill, till old age, because God will raise him up before that, see, it says, he will speak to men in the cradle, so this is his infancy and immaturity, so when he'll be uh, full strength, which in the Quran, Quranic uh, worldview is forty years and immaturity, see, and not old age, I haven't talked about that, so it's giving, giving a foreshadowing that he will basically be on the earth to maturity. And is among the righteous, she said, my lord, how will I have a son when no mortal has touched me? He said, does his God, he creates what he wills, when he decrees a matter, he but says to it, be thou and it is, so that's the word of God, be thou. Questions make a big deal about this word, but here you have it, be thou. And he will teach him the writ and wisdom, see, Al Kitab. And the, the judi- the judicious application of the Al Kitab, that's Hikmah, that's what the word wisdom is, it's always, it's used with the Al Hikmah, it's used with the Al Kitab. You'll see, that's used with the Al Kitab, Al Kitab, Al Hikmah comes together um, a lot of times, because this is the application of the writ, wisdom, how do you apply the law? And the Torah and the gospel, so God will teach him all these things. And as a messenger to children of Israel, I have come to you with a proof from your lord, that I create for you from clay, the likeness of a bird. Then I blow into it and it becomes a bird by the leave of God and I heal the blind and the leper and give life to the dead by the leave of God and I inform you of what you eat and what you store in your houses and that is a proof for you if you be believers. To continue, verse fifty, and confirming what is before me of the Torah. And making lawful lawful for you some of what was forbidden to you, I have come to you with a proof from your lord, so be in prudent fear of God and obey me. Now, here, the messenger, he's being given the scripture, the Injil in the case of Isa, so that's why he can forbid stuff, he's making lawful for you some. I'm sorry, uh, he's been given the Injil, so he's making lawful for them some of what God has forbidden, so he's, there's an alleviation, but this is not because Jesus himself is doing it, it's the scripture, uh, that's the other part that Muslims confuse, they say that Muhammad was somehow issuing edicts or laws or he was making allowed and making forbidden, no, he was, the scripture that was given to him was giving, was basically allowing and forbidding, he was just following the scripture. Now, the, the, why is, why is Yahya showing up with Isa, why, why is John showing up with Jesus? Because John is the prophet, he's in charge of the writ and somewhere else, we read in the Quran, it says that, uh, you know, God, God tells, uh, um, Yahya, he tells, hold fast uh, to the writ and here it is, um, the scripture, um, the Al Injil, the Injil is coming to Isa and Yahya is supposed to support Isa, that's how it works, the prophet, uh, the messenger confirms what is with the prophet and the prophet supports the messenger, we'll see, we'll see this happening, that's why they're both used together and they were at the same time. Okay. I have come to you with a proof from your lord, so be in prudent fear of God and obey me. God is my lord and your lord, so serve him, that is a straight path. Um. I don't know if you remember this, but anyway, this, this phrase, God is my lord and your lord, so serve him, this is a straight path, this is a confirmation, because God on the day of judgment will ask Jesus, this is in the Quran, I think it's hmm, I don't know, chapter four or five, I can't remember, anyway, God's, God asks Jesus, he says, uh, did you tell men to take you and your mother as gods besides God and he said, uh, glory be to thee, I only said to them what you commanded me, uh, serve my God, serve God, my lord and your lord, let's just look that up, I think it's chapter four, chapter five, okay, at the end. Let's look at that, we'll continue on. See, it says here, I said not to them, but what thou commandest me, serve God, my lord and your lord, so see, this is a confirmation, this, he's confirming what he said here. See, it says, uh, God is my lord and your lord, so serve him, this is a straight path, so this is how the Quran confirms itself, so I'm trying to show you. To continue, verse fifty-two, but when Jesus perceived the denial, he said, who are my helpers for God? The disciples said, we are the helpers of God, we believe in God and bear thou witness that we are submitting. Our Lord, we believe in what thou hast sent down and we follow the messenger, so write thou us down with the witness, with the witnesses. And they schemed and God schemed and God is the best of schemers. When God said, oh Jesus, I will take thee and raise thee to me and purify thee of those who ignore warning and place those who follow thee above those who ignore warning until the day of resurrection and to me is your return and I will judge between you concerning that where you differed, see, God, God said to Jesus, I'll, I'll take you, I'll raise you, um, so he didn't reach, I mean, he didn't die of old age is what I'm trying to get at, this was already foreshadowed. Verse fifty-six, and as for those who ignore warning, I will punish them with a severe punishment in the world and in the hereafter and they will have no helpers. And as for those who heed warning and do righteous deeds, he will give them their rewards in full, but God loves not the wrongdoers. That do we recite to thee of the proofs and the wise remembrance. The Quran, like I said, is also called as the Remembrance. The likeness of Jesus in the sight of God is The likeness of Jesus in the sight of God is as the likeness of Adam, he created him from dust, then he said to him, be thou, and he was. The truth is from thy lord, so be thou not of those who doubt. See, it's using the word thou here to give the messenger, um, basically, support, you know, that don't doubt what you're being revealed. Verse sixty-one, and whoso disputes with thee concerning him after the knowledge which has come to thee, say thou, come, let us call our sons. And your sons, and our women, and your women, and ourselves, and yourselves. Then let us pray in earnest and woke the curse of God upon the liars, this is the true story. And there is no God save God, and God, he is the exalted in might, the wise, and if they turn away, God knows the workers of corruption. Verse sixty-four, say thou, oh doctor of law, come to an equitable word between us and you, that we serve not save God. And that we ascribe not partnership to him, and that none of us take others as lords instead of God. And if they turn away, then say you bear witness that we are submitting. This is important, see, it's talking about the doctor of law, if you wanna know why, but again, this is translating Yahil Al Kitab is doctor of law, I encourage you to look at his, uh, addenda to the Quran where he goes to. Uh, these things, but anyway, in a nutshell, what I'm trying to say here is that these doctors of law, these are the scholars of the religions, right? And they're being told that you need to come to, uh, a, a equal word, the, you know, as in, we, we believe the same thing. It's not talking about religions, that we, see, you can be a Jew or Christian or Muslim, whatever. The point is that you need to be on the same page, if you, if you are saying that we, we serve God. And what is that page? That page is that we serve not save God, we ascribe no partnerships to him, and that none of us take others as lords instead of God. And this is what it means to be submitting, see Muslimun, this is what, it's not to convert to a religion of Islam. To continue, verse sixty-five, oh doctor of law, why dispute you about Abraham? When the Torah and the gospel were sent, when the Torah and the Injil were sent down only after him, will you then not use reason? Okay, now. Okay, let's just keep going, here, here you are, those who have disputed about that whereof you have knowledge. Why then did you dispute about that whereof you have no knowledge, and God knows and you know not? Abra- Abraham Ibrahim was neither one who holds to Judaism, nor a Christian. But was inclining to truth as one submitting, and he was not of the idolaters. Now, wha- what's this all about? So basically Abraham, uh, he could not be a Jew or a Christian according to your, um, claim. Uh, because, uh, he did not read your Torah and, uh, Injil. Uh, i- if you're Torah, you don't even actually follow the Torah and Injil, and it's the same with the Muslims, they don't actually follow the Quran, but regardless, um. Wha- what, what the argument here is that Abraham was a man of, uh, was a monotheist, he was, um. Submitting to God, you know, it says in the Quran elsewhere, it says, God said, uh, God said to him, submit, he said, I submit to lord of all mankind. That's it, so this is it, he submitted, and he was not of the idolaters in the sense that he did not split his religion into sects. This is one, one of the things that the mushrikeen do, they split the religion, the doctrine of God into sects. So that he was not a Jew or a Christian, and this also means he was not a Muslim in the sense that he followed the religion of Islam, because he never read the books that you have. Um, he, he had his, he, God gave him the guidance and he followed the guidance, but he was not a religionist. It says here, the people closest to Abraham are those who have followed him, as have this prophet, and those who heed warning, and God is the ally of the believers. A number of doctors of law would love to lead you astray, and they lead astray only themselves and they perceive not. Why would they love to lead you astray? Because they are themselves astray. And that's what they do day in, day out, I mean, the Muslims, doctors of law, um, they're promoting books that are. Not, that have nothing to do with God's guidance, they're promoting a religion that has nothing to do with God's guidance. Uh, they promote, they're promoting sectarianism, extremism, this has nothing to do with the Quran. So that's what they're doing day in and out, day out, they, they, they would love to lead you astray, they're not guiding, man. Oh doctor of law, why deny you the proofs of God when you are bearing witness? Oh doctor of law, why clothe you the truth in vanity and conceal the truth when you know? This is one of the favorite activities of the, the, the Muslim scholars, they take verses from the Quran, they twist them. Uh, they cloak them into their Hadiths, uh, stories, literature, they give you the context from the Hadiths, and they basically conceal the truth. And they know what they're doing. And a number of the doctors of law say, believe in what was sent down upon those who heed warning at the beginning of the day and deny at the end thereof that they might return. And believe not save him who follows your doctrine, say, they, say thou, guidance is the guidance of God. That one be given the like of what you have been given, or would they argue with you before your lord? Say thou, bounty is in the hand of God, he gives it to whom he wills, and God is encompassing and knowing. So the tricks they play, the games they play is that they start out with saying, yeah, yeah, we believe in what you're saying, and then they. Try, they just believe at the end, basically wasting your time and confusing you. Okay, now the next one, guidance is the guidance of God, that one be given the like of what you have been given. Let's read by the Gans footnote here, this answer addresses objections raised by those holding previous scriptures. Who reject the Quran on the basis of divergences between it and their own texts, a number of readings of this tricky segment are presented by translators. And he gives different translations here. I agree with Assad's reasoning, though I render closer to Arberry providing the logical bridge tersely by means of a comma, including a subword in a clause. What Muhammad said, Muhammad Assad says, say, behold, all true guidance is God's guidance consisting in one's being granted revelation such as you have been granted. So, God is, God is sending down his revelation, that's guidance, the Quran is guidance. Verse seventy-four, he chooses, he chooses for his mercy whom he wills, and God is possessor of tremendous bounty. And among the doctor of law is he who, if thou entrust him with a fortune, would deliver it to thee. And among them is he, if thou entrust him with a dinar, will not return it to thee unless thou stand over him. For it is that they say we owe nothing to the unschooled, and they ascribe the lie to God when they know. Verily, whoso fulfills his covenant and is in prudent fear, God loves of, God loves those of prudent fear. Basically, that the doctor of law, they have invented stuff in their doctrine, saying that we, you know, we, we don't have to give the. We can take from, um, those who are not from their own, our religion, you know, stuff like this, this is. Um, I don't know, the Jews do this a lot, where they can't consider the rest of the people as, as goyim, the cattle, and, you know, they can do whatever they wish. Anyway, that's something for the Jews, um, not that the Muslims are not guilty of this either, um. Let's just continue. Verily, whoso fulfill, okay, God, those who sell the covenant of God and their oats at a cheap price, these, those have no portion in the hereafter. And God will not speak to them or look at them on the day of resurrection, nor will he increase them in purity, and they have a painful punishment. So if you sell the proofs of God for a cheap price, you have nothing. And among them a faction distorts the writ with their tongues, that you might think of, think it from the writ, but it is not from the writ, and they say it is from God. But it is not from God, and they ascribe the lie to God when they know, I mean, I don't need to tell you who, who does this. It is not for a mortal that God should give him the writ and judgment and prophethood, then he should say to men, be servants to me rather than God. But be men of God by what you have thought of the writ and by what you have studied. Now, this is one thing that again, the scholars of Islam, I'm just picking on them because I know the most about them, I mean. I've listened to their, um, spiel and lies for a long time. They will always, ha, if you ask them a question, they will never say, go read this in the Quran, you know, decide for yourself. Go, the Quran is clear, completely detailed, they will never say that, they will always have some answer for you. Uh, uh, and they will always say, yeah, we, we know better, you know, you should follow our answer or what we think, you know. They will never say that, you know, be men of God by what you have thought of the written, by what you have studied, as in, you should study the writ yourself and be become men of God, they won't say that. This describes the Muslim scholars to a T. And isn't that what that means to be a servant to other than God when you basically follow what they are saying to you? Without any sort of, um, justification from the writ of God? Verse eighty, and nor would he command you to take the angels and the prophets as lords, would he command you denial after you have been submitting? Okay, now we continue an agreement that God made with the prophets, and when God took agreement of the prophets, what I give you of writ and wisdom. See again, together, Kitab and Hikmah, then there comes to you a messenger confirming what is with you, you shall believe in him and help him. He said, do you affirm and take upon that my covenant, said, that we do affirm, he said, then bear witness, and I am with you among the witnesses. Basically, the argument is that the prophets were given, uh, the, what, they had, they were, an agreement was taken from them to help the messenger. And like I said, you know, Yahya was, he helped, uh, Isa. Yahya was the prophet, Isa was the messenger, in the case of Muhammad, he was both a prophet and a messenger. But regardless, the doctor of law, since they are claiming to be the inheritors, um, of the, of the role of the prophet. Uh, they similarly have to help the messenger when he comes, but they're not doing it, see, this is what it's talking about. In the case of Muhammad, that the doctor of law, they're not helping the, the messenger of God. And whoso turns awa- away after this, it is they who are the perfidious. Is it then, other than the doctrine of God they seek, when to him has submitted, whoso is in the heavens and the earth willingly or unwillingly, and to him they will be returned? So. We need to submit to God, that's, that's the doctrine. Not follow religion, say thou, we believe in God and what has been sent down upon us, and what was sent down upon Abraham and Ishmael and Isaac. Um, and Jacob, Ya'ub, and the grandsons, and what was given to Musa, Moses, and Jesus, Isa. And the prophets from their lord, we make no division between any of them, and to him we are submitting. So we don't make any division, any difference between the messengers of God, see, and this is one thing that, again, the religions are guilty of. They make distinctions between the messengers. And whoso seeks a doctrine other than submission, it will not be accepted from him, and he in the hereafter will be among the losers. This is another, uh, verse that the Muslims love to, uh, twist, and then when they say it means, uh. Uh, whoso seeks, uh, a religion, is how they translate, deen regardless, and who so seeks a religion other than Al Islam. And then they say, Al Islam, the, the Islam we have, you know, with all the Hadith literature and the Sunnah and all this, and. You know, even then, there's a flavor of Islam, which is Sunni Islam, et cetera, et cetera. See, it says, and whoso seeks a doctrine other than submission, so submission to God, that is the, the, the true doctrine, not a religion. How will God guide a people who denied after their faith and had borne witness that the messenger is true and clear signs had come to them? And God guides not the wrongdoing people, those, their reward is that upon them is the curse of God and of angels and of men altogether. So. I don't wanna read too much into this, but, uh, you know, I do encourage you to think about this verse a little bit more carefully, what it's talking about, because. Uh, I'll just leave it that. Those, their reward is that upon them is the curse of God and of angels and of men altogether, they abiding eternally therein. The punishment will not be lightened for them, nor will they be granted with spite, save those who repent after that and make right, and God is forgiving and merciful. Those who ignore warning after their faith, then grow in denial, their repentance will not be accepted, and it is they who are those who go astray. So don't deny after your faith. And if you grow in denial, your repentance will not be accepted either. This is very cautionary. Don't reject God's guidance after he has made it clear to you. Because if you increase in denial, then he won't accept your repentance either, that's what it says. Verse ninety-one, those who ignore warning and die as atheists, they would not be accepted from one of them, the earth full of gold, were he to seek to ransom himself thereby. Those have a painful punishment and they will have no helpers. You attain not to virtue until you spend of what you love and what you spend of anything, God knows it. Spending is, is a big thing in the Quran, you're gonna find this again and again and again, this is very key. All food was lawful to children of Israel, save what Israel made unlawful upon himself before the Torah was sent down. Say thou, bring the Torah and recite it if you be truthful, and whoso invents a lie about God after that, it is they who are the wrongdoers. Say thou, God spoke truly, so follow the creed of Abraham, inclining to truth, and he was not of the idolaters. See, what I'm saying, the obey God and the messenger, the, the speech of the messenger is recorded in the Quran, see this word, say thou, in Arabic is Qul. This is the speech of the messenger, so all you need to do is do a search on this say thou across the Quran, and you'll find all the, the speech of the messenger. And you'll find in a lot of places that it's dependent on the messenger being alive, um. I'm just trying to show you that what this, what, how this is used, it doesn't mean you follow Hadith literature. Again, the creed of Abraham, which was what? He was a monotheist, but again, translating as inclining to truth, I encourage you to look at why he's doing it that way, and I agree with him, I'm just. Giving you a general rendering, Hanif means one who, uh, is a monotheist, believes in one God, in the truest sense of the word, that he doesn't. Pollute the doctrine of God, he doesn't corrupt the part doctrine of God, he doesn't divide, he's the doctrine of God into religions or sects. This is all part of the mushrikeens, basically, uh, characteristics. Um, they, uh, they ascribe a partnership to God, they take, uh, others judgments besides God, see, this is the other thing about Sheikh. It's to accept legislation from an authority besides God, um, when he's already given us legislation. This is again, is something the Muslims are guilty of. Now we get to the bait. Which is not the Kaaba, uh, in Makkah, Saudi Arabia, the thing they've named the box, uh, that's just an idol, I've mentioned this. Yeah, I've been mentioning it for a long time now, verse ninety-six, the first house set up for mankind was that at Baka. See, it says Baka, it doesn't say Makkah, this is important, because, uh. They, the Muslims couldn't change a letter in the Quran, that's, that's the first thing, God preserved it, the second thing is that, uh, what they have is. That thing is at Baka, so it's not talking about that, the Muslims have stories, I know, that Baka is the old name of Makkah, but that's their stories. The Quran doesn't support any of that, this was at Baka, it was the first house that was set up for mankind, blessed and a guidance for all mankind. For all mankind, not just the Muslims, and again, this is one of the things that Muslims, um. Fail to realize that this was for all mankind, anyway, in it are clear proofs of the station of Abraham, and whoso enters it is safe. Anyway, this site is lost, so I'm not gonna talk about this more anyway, but one thing I would do wanna say is that whoso entered, it was safe. This is the past tense, so man da khala hu kana amen, anyway, so whoso entered, it was safe. And so it was, it was a site, it was, it was a house, in the sense that it was a house where people could come in, see? It wasn't a box, people could come in there, and whoso entered, it was safe, so it was big enough to accommodate many people. And God's claim upon mankind is a pilgrimage to the house for those who's, for the, whoso is able to find a path to it, and whoso denies. God is free from need of all mankind. Anyway, verse ninety-eight, say thou, oh doctor of law, why deny you the proofs of God when God is witness to what you do? Say thou, oh doctor of law, why turn you away from the path of God, him who believes? Seeking his deviation when you are witnesses, and God is not unmindful of what you do, see, they turn away men from the path of God. Uh, if you, if, if someone who is seeking God, he goes to, uh, Imam Mufti, he, he's gonna, cause. He thinks Imam Mufti is guided or whatever, he goes to him and the Mufti gets him on the fast track to the Hadith literature and the Sunnah and. And doing the ritual prayer and going circling a stone cube idol seven times, so he basically sends him to Kufur. It's because they are seeking the deviation of the path of God, the path of God, by the way, is in the Quran, uh, that's the other thing. And we're gonna look at that too, God willing, as we continue. Alright, verse one hundred, oh you heed warning, if you obey a faction among those given the writ, they will drive you back after your faith. As false claimers of guidance. Now, those given the writ, now here in this, in, in, in twenty twenty-four, means. The, the, the Jews, it means the Christians, it means the Muslims, because all these three parties were given the writ. Now it's a matter of debate whether the writ with them has survived or not, or they're following it or not, whatever. The point is that these three parties, it says, if you obey a faction among those given the writ, they will drive you back after your faith as false claimers of guidance, Al Kafirun. So be careful, verse one oh one, and how can you deny, when to you are the proofs of God beside it, and in your midst is his messenger? And whoso holds fast to God, he has been guided to a straight path, so obviously, this is referring to the believers of the time of Muhammad, that the messenger is in your midst. Uh, but regardless, what I'm trying to say is that in twenty twenty-four, uh, those given the writ are those, the Jews, Christians and Muslims, okay? And whoso holds fast to God, what does that mean? That is to what God sent down, not to invented religions. Right? Isn't that what God sent down? That's the only thing that God sent down. This is revelation, so holding fast to God means to hold fast to revelation, in chapter two, we already read. How the children of Israel were, the agreement was taken to them to hold fast, um, to what God had revealed to them. To, it said, hold fast to what we, what we have given you, so. To, it said, hold fast to what we, what we have given you, so. They, they broke the agreement, Muslims is the same thing, they don't hold fast to Quran. Verse one oh two, oh you heed warning, be in prudent fear of God, with the prudent fear do him and die not save that you be submitting. And hold fast to a rope of God altogether, see the rope of God. This is not some imaginary rope, it's talking about the Quran, that's, that's the only support we have, the Quran. I mean, God is a supporter, but he sent down the revelation, we are supposed to follow it, is what I'm trying to say. And be not divided, see the dividing part, this is Greek, this is important. And remember the favor of God upon you, when you were enemies, he united your hearts so that by his favor you became brethren. And you were upon the edge of a pit of a fire and he rescued you from it, thus does God make plain to you his proofs that you might be guided. And let there be from you a community in writing to good and enjoining what is fitting and forbidding perversity and it is they who are the successful. And be not like those who became divided and disputed after clear signs had come to them and it is they who have a great punishment. The day faces will be white and faces will be black, as for those whose faces will be black, did you deny after your faith? Then taste the punishment for what you denied. And as for those whose faces will be white, in the mercy of God, therein they abide eternally. Those are the proofs of God, we recite them to thee in truth and God desires not injustice for all mankind. And to God belongs what is in the heavens and what is in the earth and to God our matters return. Verse one ten, you are the best community brought forth for mankind, you enjoy what is fitting and you forbid perversity. And you believe in God and had the doctor of the law believe, it would have been better for them, among them are believers, but most of them are perfidious. This word Fasikun, this has a specific connotation in the Quran. Uh it's those who sever what God, what what God has commanded to be joined. Um and there's other things too, so I encourage you to look at this word, perfidious, or Fasikun in Arabic. In the Quran, they will not cause you harm, save hindrance, and if they fight you, they will turn you to you their backs, then will they not be held? Pitch upon them will be ignomity whenever, wherever they are found, save for a rope from God and a rope from men. And they will incur wrath from God and wretchedness will be pitched upon them, for it is that they denied the proofs of God. And they killed the prophets without cause, for it is that they opposed and exceeded all bounds. See, denial of proofs of God is not simply that we deny it, we reject it, the doctor of law never say we reject the proofs of God, but. They uh they do reject them in action, they don't implement them, they find ways to circumvent them, this is what I understand this to mean. They are not the same, among the doctor of law is an upright community, they recite the proofs of God in watches of the night and they submit. So among them, there are some good men as well. They believe in God in the last day and enjoy what is fitting and forbid perversity and compete in good deeds and those are among the righteous. And what you, what they do of good, they will not be denied it and God knows those of prudent fear. Those who ignore warning, neither their wealth nor their children will avail them anything against God and those are the companions of the fire wherein they abide eternally. The likeness of what they spend in the life of the world is as the likeness of a wind wherein was biting cold. It befell the tilt of a people who wronged their souls and destroyed it and God wronged them not, but they wronged themselves. Oh you heed warning, take not as intimates other than your own, don't take intimates other than believers. They will not spare you ruin, they would that you should suffer. Hatred has already become clear from their mouths and what their breasts hide is greater, we have made plain the proofs to you if you will use reason. Here you are, those who love them and they love you not, when you believe in the writ, all of it. And when they meet you, they say, we believe, but when they are alone, they bite their fingertips at you from rage. Say thou, die in your rage, God knows what is in the breast. If good, if good touches you, it wreckses them and if evil befalls you, then they exalt their at. But if you are patient and in prudent fear, their plan will not harm you at all, God encompasses what they do. And we're gonna stop here because now the subject changes. Uh so, yeah, we're gonna stop at uh verse one twenty. And God willing, I'll pick it up from here in the next session, peace and blessings be upon you.